All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, September 27th. If we could have a roll call to establish quorum, Madam Clerk.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Terry Meyer.
Present.
Laura Jo Smollet.
Here.
Terry McClung.
I am here.
Autumn Slane.
Here.
Bill Ott.
Here.
All right, if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have one item I'd like to add to Fire Station Number Three. We've got a bid, discussion and resolution for that.
Is that under new business?
Be under number one, under new business. Is that be okay with everyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like discussion of the one-way on Cliff Street and German Alley.
All right, you want to put that on here?
Yeah.
Put that number four.
Well, actually, you would tend to be five.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Smollet?
Yes, I'd like to put on the agenda the camera feeds. There are video feeds that are aimed at Basin Park and other areas in town.
What in particular?
I have some general questions as a result of the vandalism in the park.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes for September 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections from anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor, sing five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we do have several vacancies. We have two vacancies on the Planning Commission. We're getting ready to, we have one on the CAPC, Hospital, Parks, and we have a nomination for the Cemetery of L.B. Wilson, who had been on the cemetery once before.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are you in a position to go ahead and for us to make a nomination and vote on him to place him?
I would be. He had been on here before.
Yes.
I would like to note to the council and to the citizens, we've had several people put in their nominations, applications for the Cemetery Commission. I really appreciate that. We've got some good interest in here. The reason L.B.'s in here is because he had served once before, and he had to quit because of personnel reasons, personal reasons, and he did, was able to come back, got that resolved, and was able to come back and put his application again, so.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate L.B. Wilson for the commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you. All right, brings us to public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes. All right, it looks like we are moving onward. We have a big agenda anyway. Get discussion for ordinance 2311, prohibiting new tourist lodging on second reading. Get a motion.
I'll make a motion that we discuss ordinance number 2311 on its second reading.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, get a motion to.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2311 on its second reading by title only.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Green made motion and Ms. Smollet seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Slane.
Yes.
Mr. Ott.
Aye.
Ms. Smollet.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2311, an ordinance prohibiting tourist lodging in properties located within any residential zone and amending Chapter 14 zoning of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to redefine tourist lodging.
Get a motion to approve ordinance 2311 on its second reading?
I move to approve the ordinance 2311 on its second reading.
And I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Looking at the votes for it. All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved. That will take us to our second ordinance to be considered, which is ordinance 2312, removing members from city commission on its second reading.
Make a motion to discuss.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the?
I have some questions.
Okay.
What is currently the situation?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
What is the current situation to remove members? I mean, it just seems strange for us to put this in here.
We do not have a method of removing commissioners from city commissions.
Okay.
Legally.
Okay.
That's the reason for it. This has recently come up, and we discovered that this was something that needed to be in our ordinance.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, sir.
The city commissions are those that are listed here under commission, committee, and top.
Mr. Weaver, you want to jump in on that? I believe some already have a method, but this is basically.
This is expected to be a cleanup for those commissions that don't have legal ways of removing commissioners. I believe either two or three commissions already have in their enabling statutes or in their enabling doctrines ways to remove, but this is to standardize the policy for those that do not or that are in jeopardy of not being legal.
And do we know which ones those are?
The primary ones would be the planning, the CAPC, and on the board, zoning adjustment, of course, it goes with the planning.
And the parks, one of those?
Parks, I believe, has their own standard to remove, and the hospital commission, I believe, does.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the cemetery off the top of my head. I'd have to look.
And I don't think the HDC has a very strong one.
The HDC is also one that would have to, would fall under this.
What about the council?
Council is by state law.
Okay.
It's not a commission.
We're elected.
Yeah, these are appointed positions.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, can I get a motion to?
Suspend. I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2312 on its second reading by title only.
Get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Slane?
Yes.
Mr. Ott?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Smollet?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2312, an ordinance providing for the procedure to remove members of city commissions. I move to approve the ordinance 2312 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Green made the motion and Mr. Ott seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved. And this brings us up to ordinance 2313, annual property tax levy for its third and final reading. Get a motion to.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
That motion's been made and discussed. This is our normal annual ordinance that we have to pass, levying the tax on the real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs. We read the first two last council, and this is a third reading, and we need to do this so we can get this over to the clerk's office. There is no change in the tax levy. It still remains the same as it has been, I want to say, for the last 10, 15 years.
Yes.
Probably longer than that, so there really isn't any change in this. Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance 2313 for its final reading by title only.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Smollet?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Slane?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2313, an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
All right, get a motion to approve ordinance 2123 on its third and final reading.
Make a motion, we approve 2123.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Ott?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Smollet?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Slane?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, that takes care of that. We'll get that over to the clerk's office. Coming up with the new business, first item, we'd get a motion to discuss resolution for the.
We got the discussion, old business, unfinished business, Cliff and German Alley.
That's new business, I believe.
Pardon?
That's new business.
Okay.
Yeah. I get a motion to discuss resolution for low bidder for the fire station number three. Get a motion?
Motion to discuss the low bidder for fire station.
Second.
Is that Ms. Green?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Slane made the motion, Ms. Green seconded.
Yes.
We opened up the bids last week for the renovation of the, renovating the fire station number three for combination fire station and council meetings, also any other city meetings that can be held over there. We did, we have received, and I'm sure the council, some of the council is probably not aware of this, but we had received a grant, approximately a $35,000 grant from the state for renovation of this project last, a year ago, a year and a half ago. So we were finally able to get it up because of COVID and everything. We had Ozark Construction, which is run locally by Latigo, here, gave us a bid of $106,652 for that, and so that's what this resolution is for.
Could you repeat the total, the sum? Thank you.
Point of inquiry?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, at one time, it had been discussed about possibly having office space over there for Main Street, USA, Eureka Springs. Is there, in the plans, is there any way for an office like Main Street to be located over there?
Right now, there's not, Mr. Ott, mainly because of the use for public meetings that would be over there at a variety of times for the city. You know, we're still looking around for Main Street, but that's probably not the best solution. We still, in my opinion, the best solution is still up on top of the hill, using the old community, the old school up there, vacant spaces they have, since that's where Main Street's located anyway, or part of their organization.
Okay.
So, at this point, it's just, the only thing we're doing over there right now is putting in an enclosure for a bathroom, new ceiling, cleaning up the floors, walls, heat and air, sound system, lighting, and then, of course, putting in a new overhead door, sliding glass door, and then the storefront to match the sliding glass door.
And it will be a working fire station?
It's a functioning fire station. Still have one bay over there for the, and we're probably going to have the antique fire truck in there, and then the overhead door will allow people to look inside it and see the fire station, or the truck.
And let them know that's the truck we use for antique fires.
Absolutely. For our antique buildings, yeah. So, any further, Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I certainly have no problem with the contractor. I know him quite well. He's quite capable. However, I would sure like to see what the bid entails, because that sounds like an awful lot of money for what we had talked about doing.
Well, I can give you the details. I mean, it's pretty much what I said. We're going to be cleaning, sandblasting floors, putting in some new concrete. We got to tear up the concrete to put in the new bathroom, handicap bathroom, new heating and air system, new lighting over there, sound system, painting the walls, new ceiling, and the front entryway.
Will it be insulated?
The ceiling would be insulated, yes. And basically, the walls are interior walls, so there won't be no insulation on the walls. It will be, the doors and all that, of course, will be insulated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there space in there to accommodate the people that were here?
There's seating right now without even moving the fire truck for approximately 45 to 50 people.
Okay.
Could we see the other bids? Did you get three bids for this?
We advertised it, and we were only able to get two bids, and one was really non-responsive, and so Ozark was the only bid that we were able to get.
So, while I'm with Terry, I would like to see it. Or are we just going to try to pass this through again?
I'm sorry, what was your?
Are we trying to pass this tonight?
I would like it. We have to notify the.
So why wasn't all this information provided before we got here, or at least in this packet for a new resolution?
Well, I mean, it's a bid that we're going to either accept it or not accept it.
But that I haven't seen. A bid that I haven't even seen.
Well, I'm not sure what you would like to see different, Ms. Slane.
I would just like to see the bid that I'm voting on.
Well, the bid was $106,652.
Well, I can tell you that my purse is $3,000, but until you see it, you don't know it's worth it.
Well, they don't break out the bids and say how much each light on it is.
Then how do they bid it? They just say, oh, $100,000?
They give us a lump sum bid. That's how you do bids.
Oh, Mr. Barry, that's not what Nabholz did.
I'm sorry, that's not what?
What Nabholz did.
Nabholz gave, is a construction, project construction manager. That's a different situation than this. This is a normal bid. Anytime you go out for bids and put out bids, advertising for bids, you get a lump sum bid.
Surely you got an email of some sort.
You do not, please let me finish. You do not get an itemized bid form. Mr. McClung?
We may not have an itemized bid, but he was given an itemized list of specs and requirements.
Absolutely.
And I think that would suffice her just as well. And I think it would me too. I mean, that's another $71,000 out of our pocket.
Right.
On, you know, something else that I assume we just have laying around. I mean, it sounds like we got tons of money just laying around. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight. I would like to see the specs and how we spec'd out, too. It sounds like an awful lot of money for what we doing. I'm sorry. That's just me.
I can provide the council with the plans and specs if they would wish. These are a complete set of plans and specs that were approved by the government to go out for bids, and they are a complete set of specifications and a complete set of plans. Mr. Ott?
If we indeed decide to do this, by the way, I attended that Arkansas Municipal League thing about bidding things out and all that stuff. It was a couple weeks ago, and they talked about this being proper, that if only one person bids, or if two people bid and one is deemed not applicable to the project, that we can go ahead and accept the one. But if we do decide to give the numbers and the specs to the council, can we come back for a special meeting and vote on it at that time, so we won't have to run this thing two weeks later than tonight?
We do. There is a time limit of 30 days for these, this bid to be accepted and through here. Ms. Green?
Do you have the paperwork in your office? Should we take a recess and go over it?
I have the paperwork. The specifications are probably 125 pages long, thick.
Oh.
The drawings are six to eight pages.
Then, no.
I can give you the drawings without a problem.
Yeah, that's.
Specifications, or detailed specifications.
Okay.
And it's at least 100 and maybe 150. Kim, do we have a set already printed up?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McClung?
If we've got 30 days, then our next meeting certainly wouldn't hurt if we didn't have a chance to look it all over before that meeting. We're still going to fall within our timeframe. I would certainly like that opportunity.
Okay. I will let Latigo know and make sure that they're okay with that.
Again, I certainly have no problem with the contractor. He's definitely qualified fellow. I know the work.
I hope, Mr. McClung, and I'm sure the rest of the council realize this, I don't know if you've got any prices on recently, on, since we've had COVID. There's anywhere from 30% to 70% increase in prices. So this is, it's not unusual. I had worked with Latigo on this prior, about six months earlier, and we ended up with approximately around the same cost. So I felt good that they were able to keep the cost. Mr. McClung?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I do understand that, and I know that there's truth in what you say, but it's still not an easy pill to swallow. One, you know, I would just like to confirm it in my own head that that's, you know, that's what we're doing is the right thing. And two, you know, I'm not, I mean, it's just, I'm concerned about the extra $71,000.
I think it's a beautiful program.
Ms. Smollet?
Yes, before we make a decision to delay this a couple weeks, I'd like for there to be a vote on that, to be sure that there's a majority of council people who really want to do that.
You would need a motion at table to take it off the agenda.
There's not, hadn't been a motion to table yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yes, sir.
I know exactly how expensive materials are. I just built two walls that cost me $900 without, and I haven't even covered them with siding yet. So, yeah. And I think what we need to decide here, because it isn't going to get any cheaper.
Yeah.
Is whether this is going to be a worthwhile project, not, I assume we have the money. I mean, Lonnie's sitting there. He could probably answer that question, but that's all we had need to do, is decide whether this is worthwhile. If we have a permanent place for meetings, so that it's set up, so that this doesn't have to be tore down every time we have a show here, that we've got everything wired over there for our meetings and for the video and for the audio, the seating can be arranged properly, so that it's there all the time. It can be a dedicated meeting place, which I think is worthwhile.
I agree.
Ms. Slane?
I completely agree with you, but I also think that we have real issues in this town as far as, I literally have people that are homeless, and I've been told that we can't afford to run utilities because we can't afford to do that. But yet, week after week, we sit here and pass hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that is just my concern, like who speaks up for our residents? And when does this, this is just so much spending lately. That's my only concern, but thank you.
Ms. Smollet?
This has been a project that's been talked about at least three years.
Okay.
Four, he says four. It's in, one of the responses when I first started the ADA, trying to get the city to upgrade to ADA. I don't like to see the city put off establishing a meeting area that will really be very conducive for everyone who's a citizen. If anyone was interested in the project, I think over four years, there was plenty of time to look at plans, drawings, specs. I've seen several over time. I'm prepared to go ahead and vote on this tonight.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to table till the next meeting.
I'll second that.
I got a motion to table this. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. It would be postpone this. Does the table take it off? It would be deferred. Deferred, okay.
Next meeting.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Ott?
No.
Ms. Smollet?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Slane?
Yes.
Two for.
Motion fails. All right, further discussion?
I make a motion, we assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Discussion?
Is that you, Melissa?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Meyer and second by Melissa to read, sign the number and read for passage. All in favor, sing five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Four to.
Resolution number 803, a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept Ozark Construction as low bidder on Fire Station Number Three renovation, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, being aware of the planned renovation at Fire Station Number Three, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs solicited bids which were opened and tabulated with Ozark Construction as lowest bidder, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city council does award the bid to Ozark Construction in the amount of $106,652, and furthermore, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to complete the awarding of said bid.
All right, that gets me to our second item is a discussion of Black Bass Dam.
A motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and discuss. We have received a grant from the Department of Emergency Management for $300,000 for repair, to go toward the repair of Black Bass Dam. I'm sure, as has already been discussed, there's concern about spending all this money that we've gotten. So much, some of this is, of course, from grants that we've got. I don't know how many are familiar with Black Bass Dam, but if you haven't been down there, it's.
Scary.
It is scary, and it's getting worse all the time. It's something I have been trying and working on, I wouldn't say for at least 15 years. And this, we've finally gotten an opportunity to get a grant. It's not going to be all the money, but because right now we don't know what the total cost is going to be. But the main thing is, we did receive the grant for $300,000. Now, chances are, we're going to end up having to put a couple of hundred thousand back into it to save the dam. And just to make sure that you realize how important this dam is, that if the dam fails, I shouldn't say if, but when the dam fails, it would take out our water supply down below. And that's a water supply for the entire west side of Eureka Springs. That includes the Crescent Hotel, the hospital, and all the residences out toward the west, plus fire protection. So all of a sudden, we would be without water in the west part of town and fire protection. I don't know for how long. Obviously, the water would go down rather rapidly, but for the time for Carol Boone to get in there and get it fixed, it may be a matter of two or three days. It may be a matter of two or three weeks, depending on, again, knowing how COVID is and getting material and equipment. It could be a lot longer than we expect. So. is and getting material and equipment, it could be a lot longer than we expect. So, that's the importance of the dam. Mr. Ott?
What action do we need to take tonight on this, Mayor?
I'd like to see y'all vote to approve, sign a number and approve the resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Ms. Slane?
Just for clarification, is the dam, the water sourced from the dam? That is not part of the Carol Boone Water District.
No, the water, the Carol Boone Water District has a pump right below the dam.
Okay.
I mean, almost directly below it, is the main pump that goes to serve the tower up there that we all see on Highway 62.
Okay.
At the end of Ozark.
Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Green?
Well, what would it cost if the dam failed to get the water back up?
I have no idea what it would cost.
Probably a lot more than we're going to
Well, we'd have to remove all of the dam, we'd have, you know, plus we wouldn't have the dam anymore.
Plus, this is
That's a source of a lot of people.
Well, it's one of our most historic things.
Yeah.
And so, no, this is very good. Thank you.
Point of inquiry, isn't there also some homes down below the dam that would be in jeopardy if we had this tsunami of water come through?
Well, there are some homes down there. Hopefully, one of the homes right next, closest to the dam, is up high enough that it wouldn't be affected.
Okay.
I don't think it would be affected, but there would be some homes down there that I'm sure would be affected, plus roads. I mean, I'm sure it would tear up the road and highway and a lot of other damage in through there. And I don't know what it would go on to Lake Leatherwood. Mr. Meyer?
I got a feeling it'd be a mudslide, too. The dam's right silted in, and it would just be a muddy mess going down there. It would bury that pump house.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 804, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from Arkansas Department of Emergency Management for mitigating the condition of Black Bass Dam. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs has determined that the City of Eureka Springs meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for an Arkansas Department of Emergency Management mitigation whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs recognizes the need for mitigating the condition of Black Bass Dam, concurs with this project's importance, and supports the mayor of Eureka Springs in the effort to proceed with the same. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the City of Eureka Springs mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the City of Eureka Springs to accept the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management mitigation grant of $300,000 for the purpose of funding mitigation of the condition of Black Bass Dam, and that the mayor is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
What was that number?
Eight zero four. There'll be one on your desk.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To back up one item, would you consider giving the council members the specs and stuff from the fire station?
Yeah, I'll be glad. That's not
Okay, that'll add to the feeling of transparency for the council. Thank you.
No problem. All right, that brings us to our next item, is item four, or item three, actually, resolution, public hearing to vacate portions of Owl Street.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Second.
All right, we need to set a public hearing for the consideration of vacating a part of Owl Street. Owl Street, I think, the clerk circulated some photographs, and in your packet, there should be a map, and it's up on Wall Street?
Actually, it's below Wheeler and above Bat. It runs in this direction, right up this hill, and there's only a tiny fragment in that whole area that has not yet been vacated.
Okay. So, what we need is basically setting a date for the public hearing.
Right.
Mr. Meyer?
Which colored part on the map we're talking about? The blue or the pink?
The blue is identified as the water main. The pink circling owl is the section of owl that's referenced.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we set a date for the public hearing for this vacation.
I'll second.
Point of inquiry, would that be at our next council meeting?
No, the date's in the resolution.
Okay, the date is October 25th, for the public to understand. Okay. Any further comments? All right, we got a motion and a second to sign this number and read for passage. All in favor, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Resolution 805, a resolution to set a public hearing date for consideration of vacating a section of Owl Street in Riley and Armstrong. Whereas the property owner of lots 1920 and 21 in Block 162 of the Riley and Armstrong survey has submitted a petition to the City of Eureka Springs to vacate a portion of an unopened street running northeast to southwest, and whereas the signed petition was submitted to the council in regular session, it's in your packet, on September 17, 2021, 27, not 17, along with a copy of the plat showing the streets, alleys, and adjoining lots. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated 14301302C provides that the city council shall by resolution fix a day for the hearing of the petition filed to vacate a street or alley, and whereas the law further directs the city clerk to give notice of the meeting by publication once per week for two consecutive weeks and some newspaper published in Carroll County, Arkansas, and having a general circulation in the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the petition to vacate the above described section of Owl Street is set for hearing on October 25, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the auditorium of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and the city clerk shall give notice of this meeting by publication as set forth by Arkansas Code ACA 14301302C.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us down to new item number four, which is code definition for the city-approved music festivals. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss?
Second.
In your packet, you will see one page that will, in gray, are the proposed changes. That's changes that include deletions and additions. Deletions are, have a line through the wording. Additions are italicized. So, if you would like, I would have the clerk read through the, what will be changed. That's okay with everyone. Madam Clerk, would you like to?
Yeah, may I say one thing about why this is here?
Okay.
There has been confusion. When the regs were generated for amplified sound in about 2014, only one part of code was identified as needing a change. Unfortunately, the larger section was not viewed carefully, and reference to single events was not addressed, and it has created confusion amongst the people who would have gotten amplified sound permits. And so, it became clear that this is the perfect time to differentiate between an actual music festival, where you can get an amplified sound permit, and a single standalone event like Drumming in the Park. So, the first part of this is from the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. Officially-approved music festival, an organized event typically lasting several days, featuring performances by various musicians, singers, and groups, with a completed permit including signatures of city department directors and the mayor. Of course, the second part's from code. Currently, in 7.16.01 restrictions for commercially zoned areas, A, this is with the corrections, with the proposed changes. No person shall operate or allow to be operated any loudspeaker, sound amplifier, or similar device from which sound emanates out of doors in a commercially zoned area, with the exception of those businesses having a restaurant license, permitted outdoor seating, and amplified sound permit for an officially-approved music festival as authorized by 7.16.07. Amplified sound emanating from permitted businesses will not exceed 65 decibels, or 85 decibels for officially-approved music festivals as measured by an SLM. B, no person shall operate or cause to be operated any sound amplifier or similar device indoors in such a manner that sound produced is projected beyond the perimeter of the property on which the sound is produced at a sound level of more than 65 decibels as measured by a sound level meter. In residential zoned areas, under no circumstances shall amplified sound exceed 60 decibels as measured by an SLM in a residential area. Businesses having a restaurant license and permitted outdoor seating that operate in an area zone residential or quiet zone shall have a restriction on sound produced, but shall not exceed 65 decibels. There is a section in code about special events currently at list 2 a.m. That appears to have been problematic. One proposal is to gear it back to midnight. You can see on the left-hand side that there are two opinions from the police department, one from the chief for 10 p.m., one from the code enforcement officer for 11, because things start a little bit later in the summer. So, the proposed change for 7.16.07, the mayor, city clerk may issue special permits allowing the production of amplified sound in commercially zoned districts to be extended until the current proposal is 12 midnight, and at a level not to exceed 85 decibels for officially-approved music festivals.
Hi, Ms. McClung?
Okay, I'm, this is, I'm really not sure what it is that we're changing on this. I mean, are you, apparently somebody's done some kind of complaining or something, and so I'm not sure what it is, if you're trying to tighten the belt and restrict something, or
Definition at the top, I think is what
So, can I get an explanation, maybe?
All right, Ms., the clerk has been running traps on this for the last two weeks, and so Madam Clerk, would you like to elaborate your
Yes. Pre-COVID, we knew we were getting into a territory where there was not clarity in the code. And there were times when it was not truly, there wasn't a line, there wasn't a clear line between what was intended when the ordinance was passed in 2014, and I think you were at the table, and James DeVito was at the table specifying officially-approved music festivals. Well, the permit says that, but in the minds of some of the business owners who have the requisite outdoor seating, commercial area, alcohol beverage license, all of that, their feeling was very strongly that if they are having an event, that's not a city-approved music festival, if they are having an event, they ought to get an amplified sound permit. And so, it became really clear that we really needed to ensure that everyone has the same understanding of what a city-approved music festival is, which was the intention in 2014, and a private event or a standalone event such as the Kate Brothers in Basin Park. That is not a music festival, that's a one-time, we needed a very clear line so folks would not feel that they were being discriminated against.
I have two questions. One is, did somebody complain about the Kate Brothers or something like that?
No.
Okay. Then the other question is, is someone complaining about restaurant establishments that have outside music?
Yes.
At nights?
Yes.
Just because they're operating as a business and they're allowed to do that?
The larger
It's not a festival. It's a part of their permitted business right.
The problem is that people did not understand that simply because they were having an event, they had the right to crank the music up. And the majority of the events came not from restaurants this time, but from a business owner who actually ended up being wonderfully cautious and wonderfully, he did a great job of containing some very rowdy behavior, so it all worked out beautifully, without an amplified sound permit.
I guess what I need to know, then, is from the city attorney, is that aren't restaurants that have outside dining allowed to have outside music?
Yes.
Every night? That they, any night, any and every night, they want to have it?
There are restrictions about how far it can be heard from the business. And as long as they meet those specifications, it's my understanding, yes, they can at this time.
My question, Mr. Attorney, is, okay, so the restaurant has a business license, restaurant license, alcohol license, and do they have to have as well an amplified sound permit to operate as a business and have
Right, I had that same question.
Have music.
May I explain? The amplified sound permit is specific to city-approved music festivals. Anyone can play in a commercial area to 65 decibels. This exchange might very well be 65 decibels. It's not very loud. So, anyone who has outdoor seating can have amplified sound as long as it does not exceed the decibel level. The 85 decibels is specific to city-approved music festivals. And there are two aspects at play here to clarify the difference between a city-approved music festival and a standalone event, be it private or city-sponsored, and the time cutoff. In the code, right now, it says 2 a.m. There's a very strong feeling that 2 a.m. is way too late. The, most bar owners will start winding it down at 10 o'clock. And so, I picked 12 midnight just as a beginning point for the sake of conversation, and Bobby did point out that oftentimes in the summer, bands don't really get rolling until 9 or 10 o'clock.
Okay. What, Mr. Mayor, if I may, again,
Mr. McClung?
What I'm seeing here is what you're doing is taking out the, or be an officially-recognized music festival. Is that right? You're trying to rewrite the ordinance?
No, it's, the section above is separate from the ordinance that was passed in 2014. The thing is that when '07, special events at the bottom, when that ordinance was passed in 2014, the folks who drafted the ordinance did not look at the rest of the code, they did not look at 7.16.04, and therefore, that created what has been an ongoing confusion.
I think it's just an opinion.
[coughs]
Maybe we did consider it, and I'm sure we probably did. We were, we were pretty thorough on this back We were, we were pretty thorough on this back when we did this.
I'm just saying that I deal with amplified sound permits every year, and this, we have recognized that the lack of clarity has been a problem.
I don't see a lack of clarity in the ordinance as it was written. It says an amplified sound permit or be an officially-recognized a few music festival. So, I mean, it is allowable as it currently extends.
Please-
You're wanting to change an ordinance.
This is because law enforcement sees a conflict. It took me a while to agree that it puts them in a very difficult situation, and it puts the restaurant owners with outdoor seating in a difficult situation because there's not clarity. And truly, if you had sat, if you had been in City Hall the last several weeks through this series of conversations, you would understand why this, it's really important that we differentiate between a city-approved music festival and a one-time event, private or CAPC-sponsored or-
Well, it sounds like to me what you're trying to do is restrict businesses on a daily basis in their operation.
This language, 7.16.07, is already in code.
Understand.
The restriction is already there.
And what you're doing is just adding a definition of what a music festival is, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that, the first half of that definition actually came from the dictionary, the second half of it came from code.
Okay, well, I understand.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, you're pulling out the "or be" in trying to make it all be an officially-approved music festival and taking restaurants clear out in that, in commercial zoned areas A in 7.16.04.
I'm trying to get the language to be the same in all three sectors.
But they're not all three the same thing?
Terry, I really, I'm, I would not, I would not have brought this to the table if I had not wrestled with this every year and particularly this year. I don't, I don't assert myself about things unless it is, it is really, it is really important.
I have no compunction to restrict anyone's business as it's already written, and I think that's what this would do.
Ms. Smalley?
I'm a bit confused. If the conflict is between a business located in a commercial district and another business located in a commercial or residential district, those are day-to-day businesses, why are we changing music festival definitions? Because that would have no bearing upon the day-to-day operating business.
I'm not understanding what you mean.
Okay, my understanding that the conflict is between a commercially-zoned business, commercially-zoned restaurant, and another-
Commercial-zoned area.
You know, nearby business, but we're modifying the-
No, that's not-
Festival definition, so if, I mean, I confused something, I'm not getting it.
Yeah. Ms. Green, we'll come back, see if we can get that clarified.
What I think this is doing is giving a definition of what a music festival is. I don't think it's taking anything away from restaurants or businesses having amplified music.
You're not reading it, then.
Well, yeah, I am. It seems clear to me.
Do you realize that almost every restaurant, when they get their permits, get a permit for amplified music? So this is not deleting that at all, isn't that correct?
There is an annual amplified sound permit that allows the businesses that fit the parameters to apply for a second city-approved music festival permit for a three-day period. They are, and so when the invoices go out for alcohol beverage license renewals, the restaurants who fit the parameters all receive an application if they want to have the annual. And if they remit the $50, then when the opportunity arises for a city-approved music festival, they can fill out an application for that specific music festival, and that permit also wins its way through the department head.
But they already receive approval for amplified music. We have three or four restaurants that I know have already had outdoor music, say, nightly, and that's amplified music.
Okay, let me, let me back up. There are two amplified sound permits. One is annual, and folks like-
That's okay, but that's what I'm talking about. They get, they have an annual amplified sound permit, so those four can play music outside until-
At 65 decibels.
At 65 decibels until, and I don't see that or in here.
Until it's too cold to play outside?
Yes, and then, if they so choose, and there's a city-approved music festival, they can apply for the secondary license permit specific to Ozark Folk Fest, uh-
The barbecue last weekend with the-
That was a private event.
Okay.
So that didn't fit into city-approved music festival. It's the multi-day, what do we have? We have blues, we have jazz, we have Ozark Folk Festival.
Used to have blues.
May, fine arts. Terry has a question.
Well, mine is for the city attorney. And what I want to do is show this to him and have him read this and give me what his interpretation of that is. Read this and tell me what that says. Does it include restaurants as they currently are, or do they have to have a, they have to get a festival permit?
Subject to the way I read it, they can get the basic annual permit if they meet those three qualifications there at the top of that.
All three?
Yes, but to get the festival permit, which allows the music, as I understand it, to be played at a different timeframe and a different volume, they need that separate thing. And this will prevent them from-
If you strike those two words, "or be," and make the continuation on for an officially-approved music festival, doesn't that remove restaurants on their own merit on a daily basis? Because that's what's allowed in there, as it is currently written. It's taking that privilege away.
Well, they don't have that privilege.
Yes, they do. They operate that way today.
They can operate to the 65 decibel level, but they cannot operate at the festival level.
I didn't say that. At the 65, they're allowed to, yes. You know, if they want to increase it to 85, that's, they have to get that permit. But in that top, in that top section, if you take that out, then they're losing the ability even off, have it at 65. If you take out "or be" and replace it with "for," it changes the complexion completely.
But it also states as authorized by section 17.6, 7.16.07, for special events.
That's in reference to the 85 decibels.
And that's what this is, says, "an officially-approved music festival as authorized by 7.16.07."
I feel like we need to pull these ordinances that, I appreciate these notes, but it's almost like we all need to kind of look at everything else in that ordinance, just to be sure.
It's not going to be in the code book if it wasn't in, what goes into the code book gets extracted from the ordinances that are passed.
Okay.
And that's part of what happened here.
Okay.
The ordinance that was passed in 2014 only addressed this one section of code, but it didn't anticipate the problems that would be generated in this part of code. And in '04, it specifically lists that they can play to 65 decibels. It doesn't, it doesn't remove their ability to play amplified music. It's right, it's still there.
Not the way it's written, not with that, you strike those two words and that other one. They have to be, they have to be a restaurant, they have to be all those, they have to have that license, and they have to be having a festival. They have to be a permitted festival, that's-
To play at 85.
Huh?
To play at 85.
No, no, it's-
Yeah.
Play it all.
To play at 85, but they can play at 65.
To play it all is what it says.
Mr. Ott?
Here's how I understand it, and hopefully you can let me know if I'm understanding it correctly or not. The restaurants that play outdoor music, that's the annual thing that they get. They can do that all year round. But if they want to play and play at the higher rate during a festival, that's when this would apply. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the purpose that we're trying to achieve.
Okay, and so it would not prohibit them from playing their music as they normally do, but if they wanted to participate in the festival, they would need to get permitted, and that would allow them to play at a higher decibel rate. Am I hearing, is that my understanding correctly?
So I understand it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McLean?
May I throw out a hypothetical there, maybe this will help clear it up for me, maybe the rest of us? Say, for example, the Gravel Bar, they have music there several nights a week. And the way I see this, as you have it written, if we change that with the inclusion of that, they won't have that privilege anymore to operate music nightly or every other night or any night of the week that they just so choose whenever they want to book somebody at 65 decibels.
Terry, they're very clear on the difference. They don't, the guys at the Gravel Bar don't, they understand their limit is 65 decibels and they can play every single night.
Okay.
They do not object. They also understand that if they wanted to participate in a music festival and have the right to crank it up to 85 decibels, they're, they don't have a problem with this.
Well, we've been-
The way I read what you have done there, what you're doing there is taking that privilege away.
It's still there. It's not lined out.
Ms. Slade? I mean, Smalley?
Where are the decibels measured at? Where is that meter located? Is it measuring the decibels as it leaves the speaker?
There.
Is it?
On property.
Oh, that's- Is it measuring the decibels where the audience is sitting, or is it measuring the decibels at a property line?
That is a whole different-
It's a different ordinance, a different line.
Yeah.
But should that not be?
No.
It shouldn't be?
That is really-
That's a different line item.
That's a whole different consideration.
And we don't have a problem with that one.
And what is it that you want to accomplish tonight with this?
I'm hoping for the opportunity to have an ordinance written that will align the language in 17.16.07, and that ordinance that was passed in 2014, with the language that's in 17.16.04, an ordinance that was passed in 2009. And law enforcement will feel really grateful to not have what they are perceiving as a conflict in interpretation.
Mr. Weaver, are you comfortable with this?
Given what's been said here tonight by Mr. McClung and by the rest of the council, I think an ordinance can be crafted that will meet what Mr. McClung is worried about by specifically exempting it. I think this language exempts it, but I can make it crafted where it's much more clear, and hopefully it will avoid any confusion going forward, because from what I understand, we have a lot of confusion right now among the people out there who are applying for these different kinds of permits.
Yeah.
Mr. Ott?
Mr. Mayor, if we're not going to act on this tonight, but simply give a suggestion to the city attorney to craft an ordinance that would embrace what we're talking about, I might suggest a couple things. One is, in your opening paragraph, since the word "several" sometimes denotes three, I would probably change it to multiple, just maybe a two-night, or it could be a four-night, so lasting multiple days, I would change the word from "several" to "multiple." And the other thing is, I see we've changed it already from 2 a.m. to 12 midnight, and I see that both Brian and Bobby wanted to go from 10 to 11. Since it is a limited event, I know that many of the bands and stuff that come to these things, the entertainers, they don't really start their last show until around 10 o'clock or so. So I wouldn't, if it's, unless it's going to be super terrible to allow it to be at midnight, I would strongly encourage us to leave it at the 12 midnight in that. So my two changes and suggestions are changing "several" to "multiple" and leaving the 12 midnight in there.
Are you making that a motion, sir?
So move.
Can we do it in two parts, please?
In the opening paragraph, changing the word "several" to "multiple," it'd be multiple days in the opening paragraph up at the top.
I think rather than giving directives right now, we should allow our city attorney an opportunity to draft the ordinance, and he can modify any language that he deems necessary to make it very clear, and then we can pick over words.
I'll make a motion that we enable our city attorney to write an ordinance for the proposed changes.
Second.
All right, further discussion? Mr. McLean, I mean, Mr. Ott?
The only thing I have, it's just for, so we won't have to go back and change it again. If it needs, if you need a motion, I would so move to change "several" to "multiple" and keep 12 midnight in there.
We can do it when he drafts the ordinance, Mr. Ott, at the table.
We got a motion, unless you want to make an amendment.
Call the issue.
You know, we can, we can do it when we vote, that's fine. I'm just thinking that if he has this information now that he wants in there, and we all approve of it, then it'd be easier for him just to draft it all only once.
I'm sure he'll probably take that under consideration. All right, we got a motion and a second to have our city attorney draft an ordinance making changes to the 7.16.04 and 7.16.07. Any further discussion? All in favor, say a five, say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to item for discussion on your one-way on Cliff Street.
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you were going to-
Mr. Mayor, you were going to talk to the police chief and the fire chief about this? Have you got any feedback from them?
I did. I got department heads, and they really didn't see that this would really resolve much. In fact, I've also received two, the people who signed the petition wish that they hadn't assigned it and are concerned that it's, again, they're not, they don't feel like it's going to solve any problems. We already have streets in town that are as narrow or narrower. We can go in, and, and again, like several of our other streets, if speeding is a problem, we can, you know, look at putting our speed bumps. But the one-way is, I think, is just going to create more trouble and also possibly create some issues that, that, you know, the residents, several, a couple of the residents, anyway, do not want to, want to see. So their recommendation was not to do it.
So there, somebody has changed their mind. I think it probably no.
I don't think anybody changed their mind. The ones that talked to me felt like they were more or less pushed into signing the petition.
I was there when everyone signed that petition.
Everyone signed it?
No one was pressured to sign any petition.
Well, they felt like they were pressured.
Well, I know one of those people. Anyway.
There was two, there's two.
Regardless of, regardless of that, the signees, it's the amount of traffic on those two streets, as steep as German Alley is, I know one house that almost got wiped out during the winter when a truck came, brand-new truck came sliding down on the ice. And if it was one-way going up, they wouldn't try to come down it. People still try to use their GPS to follow those things. And there are other one-way streets that are wider than, than those two streets in this town. And these two have got a lot of traffic because of the way the GPSs are running people up to the Crescent Hotel by taking that route. So, I don't know. I don't know about, I was there when everyone signed the petition, and it didn't seem like they were pressured in doing anything. But be that as it may, safety is what the issue is all about. And it's just, it's unsafe with the amount of traffic that's there.
Ms. Slane?
I think our police department's doing an amazing job, but maybe with all the speeding and everything going on everywhere, we could get them out, giving tickets, making that money.
We, we, I talk to the chiefs quite often about having the people up there. We are limited, remember, we're not, you know, having people able to sit down there and, and run radar all the time.
Right.
They get called on other, other duties. We have some other streets that even have worse speeding on, and we're trying to deal with those also. Ms. Green?
I, I got the impression, not so much the speeding, but just the evasiveness of cars going the wrong way, you know, with the GPS telling them. What were the department heads' recommendations? Did they have any?
They felt like it's been this way for, you know, fifty years.
Right.
And there hadn't been any accidents on there, some of our other streets. And of course, Mr. Ott is, is a victim of, of steep, not even slick street.
Yes, yes, I am.
Yeah.
But accidents happen.
Well, I, I think.
And if you can go up a slick, a slick street and slide backwards.
You're right. I, I think that what was applicable even five years ago isn't, it's kind of becoming non-applicable today with GPS and all this. I, I think that, I mean, I'm not going to say, okay, yeah, it has to be one-way or this or that, but I, I think we should look at every avenue with this because I, I think it, it is destructive to that area. I think maybe that broken water main was too much use on that one street. I don't know.
That didn't come from the use of the water. That came from, you know, summertime and, and old utilities.
Uh-huh.
Had nothing to do with traffic.
What about stronger language signs? I mean, I think.
I think signees would be a good, there's nothing wrong in where the roads would sign up. So, Ms. Smalley?
The issue is the increasing frequency in which people who don't live in Eureka find themselves head-on-head. And who backs up, and how do you get around them? And that that is becoming an increasing issue because people are then trying to get into tiny little parking spaces and driveways, and they feel that their vehicles are going to get hit eventually as well.
Kind of like I'm not, I'm not lost, I'm exploring.
Yeah.
Well, I have, I use that street a lot. And I'm able to pull over when I meet somebody.
Yeah.
You know, and the, the visitors that are in town are usually, the people are going real slow. That's not the speeders.
No, I'm not saying that the issue is speeding. I'm saying that it's the confusion created by two people who are meeting head-on, and when they're not Eureka's, they don't know what to do. They don't know who pulls over. You know, we, we kind of developed our own way that we have the dance, we know the walls.
We have other streets that are just as narrow, and that are two-way streets, too.
Let me ask one quick question, and then I, I will shut up. If we were to make it one-way, is it, is it going to be invasive to people living in that area that, that aren't happy about that? I mean, is, is it, is it going to be invasive if, if they make it one-way? Is it going to make it harder for people to get?
I can't answer with them.
Okay.
Mr. McClung?
I lived down there for six years at eleven Cliff Street back in the late seventies, early eighties. And the waterline busted down there then. Somebody ran into Walden's house down on the end of the street. I mean, it, it's just, it's, it's one of those places that it's, it's liable to happen, but it's only happened the two times that I know of in the last, I don't know, forty-seven years. So, I mean, you know, it's, it just is what it is. It's Eureka Springs.
I, I have a problem with saying that since it hasn't fifty years, it's been two-way, that it's just fine. Yes, us locals do know how to avoid each other when we take those streets, but it's the people that are from out of state that hit head-on, and they don't know what to do. Or, you know, or they pull into somebody's driveway and, or, you know. When some of them come up to the hill, they just stop and look, and they look at their GPS. And then when somebody comes up to them like that, nobody knows what to do.
They're just exploring.
It's, 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 again, it's heavy traffic. That's different now than it was fifty years ago. It's the amount of traffic, and it's not local traffic, it's tourist traffic. I'll bet you when we were, I was there, little party, two people were taking off yesterday, and every car that went by while we were there was an out-of-state automobile. So.
Mr. Ott?
Was, you're saying there was a consensus of your department heads not to make it one-way, to keep it two-way?
Correct.
And then the other?
They did not see a reason to make it one-way.
Okay, the other question is, those people who happen to have a driveway on that street, they would only have access to it from one direction, correct? They couldn't come back the other way, just pull into the driveway, it's shorter.
I think there's only two police people, three people that have driveways, two on one side and one on the other, if I'm not mistaken.
But that would be a, they couldn't, they can only get to their driveway in one direction. They couldn't take a shortcut, because they'd be going the wrong way in a one-way street, correct?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what that problem that is. I don't think that's a problem.
About, about that, those people that were here, were here
Yeah.
at the last meeting and said that we would be more inconvenienced than anyone else, but we still want it one-way because of the traffic, so.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's go on to our next item, then, get a motion to discuss cameras.
Yes.
Get a second?
Second.
You didn't know you made a motion, did you?
All right, Ms. Smalley?
It's getting late. I saw the damage done to the, to the Doughboy statue in Basin Park, and I haven't done a thorough investigation yet, but my understanding was that there's no camera.
There was a camera there.
There is a camera there. Was, was it operating at the time?
They were able to get it operating, and they found out the person from the, from the video.
Okay. Well, that answered my question then, because I had heard rumors through town that the cameras were not operating.
Sure.
And I wanted to be sure that, you know, because I know we have cameras in several locations in downtown, and I want to be sure that they are all operating. Did they get them, which?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
I'd sure like to know the motive.
Yeah.
Sure, and we, yeah. All right. That brings us up to agenda setting. Ms. Smalley?
I would like to invite the, the chief to come down, and I'd like to open a discussion on our volunteer police.
I'll second that.
On police or fire, what, what did you say?
Volunteer police.
Oh.
And what respect?
I've received several complaints from people about volunteer police just walking into some of the bars and entertainment places. And I didn't even know that we used volunteer police on a weekly basis. So I'd like to get some accurate information from the chief about that.
Okay.
And I have some information that I'd like and I'll forward it to you, Mayor, so it can be distributed to all the council members and everything.
All right, anybody else?
Do we call those reserves, the volunteer police?
They are, the reserves. Okay. Brings us to council comments, Mr. Ott?
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought to my attention that some people think that I am shunning them by having my back turned to the camera. So I would like to clarify why I sit the way I do. I have a very bad neck, and if I was to sit here, that means I'd have to turn my neck the whole meeting. So trust me, I, I've never met a camera I didn't like. I love to have my countenance full face. But due to medical reasons, I'm sitting like this so I can see everybody rather than sitting like that and having to turn my neck. So I apologize if, if anybody had any questions or was troubled by that, but.
Do we need to get you a swivel chair?
No, neck, swivel neck would be great. This allows me to look at everybody without having to turn my neck. And if it offends anyone, I apologize for that. But trust me, it's much better for my physicality if I'm sitting here looking and, you know. I mean, I can put a little picture of myself here if that, that would help. But I just wanted to explain that, because it came up as some people have said, is he stuck up, why isn't he showing his face, or is he hiding something, or whatever. So I just wanted to make it clear why I'm doing it. Thank you.
Ms. Smalley?
Once again, I can't believe how many visitors are coming to Eureka Springs this year. September has just been as busy every weekend as August seems to have been, and that makes me very, very happy. But one thing I do want to talk about, of course Pivot Rock, because I see Pivot Rock every day, but some other streets as well, where there aren't local property owners, and the land's not developed. I'm seeing a lot of trash gathering, you know, within two to six feet from the road, bottles and beer cans, and just all kinds of things being discarded along the way. I'd like to find out if there's anything we can do as a citywide event involving citizens or whatever to do some cleanups in some targeted areas in November or something between the two tourist seasons. See if the city would be willing to use Springfield t-shirts and bags and things like that, and organize a good citywide cleanup effort. Thank you.
I can talk with Dwayne. We did have at one time, there was a day when people did do, go out and do the cleanup. I don't remember what that was called on the highway, so.
Yeah, why don't we do something like at the community center and have a barbecue and have a big local event? And clean. It would be nice.
All right. Ms. Green?
Well, it's nice to see Bikes, Booz, and Barbecue is over for another year. I'm really, really happy for the people in town that a lot of them made their winter money. And, you know, I know a lot of people don't like it, but, you know, it's one weekend a year, and I feel like everybody gets a weekend, and so I'm really happy for those businesses. And I didn't think it was that long.
Ms. Slane?
I just wanted to re-talk about information. I've just been struggling getting information at all. There's, the city website's down still?
CityofEurekaSprings.us will get you there, not org.
I've been typing in that. I let, I have it saved to my computer on a tab, and it's literally still the, like, the Asian resale.
I tried it today, US worked, but org did not. That got the.
Okay, I'll try it again.
That's a Google issue. That's an out-of-city issue. That's a Google problem.
Delete that tab and then start over. Because sometimes it will go back to the original.
Right.
So what is the correct URL for that?
Madam Clerk?
CityofEurekaSprings.us.
Along that same line.
Ms. Slane, I would suggest if you do have problems, get ahold of, of Ann or Kim, and they should be able to help you.
No, it, it really is a Google thing. And they, they're not concerned about our.
No, Google's not. They're, we're small fish.
I'm having trouble with my Gmail when I try to send Gmail to any city employee who's using the .us URL. It's kicking it back as completely unrecognized, and I cannot get email to, to city employees.
Yeah, and I'm blocked from some people. Some of it's good, though.
Well, as an alternative, if it's not really pers, may I interject? I'm just jumping in there, like. If it's not something that you're really concerned about, if you send it to my address, which is still .org, it's not gov.
Mm-hmm.
Do you mean to the .gov addresses? Nobody has a .us, but there are some.
Yeah, there is, shouldn't be any .us.
I have a CityofEurekaSprings AR.
.gov.
.gov, and it's completely unrecognized. It will not send anybody to, any email to that.
Try sending one to me.
Yes, well, but you have a .gov, yes?
I have a .gov.
If it kicks back from.
And you're using the AR, City of Eureka Springs AR?
Mine is mayor@EurekaSpringsAR.gov.
And, and you do, are, I don't know, why do we have so many URLs that are being emailed?
I haven't had any issues with any of mine.
Why are some people CityofEurekaSprings dot, others are CityofEurekaSpringsUS dot? Why, why don't we just have one?
We do. We just have one. EurekaSpringsAR.gov is the official city.
We've actually got two because not everybody has transitioned over.
Well, the other one is, is the .
Org.
Org. But it's not, it's not US.org.
Some of us need aliases.
All I'm saying is it's confusing, and the city website is posting different email addresses than the employee wants to have use. So if I click on the one that's right on the city website, that's an invalid address.
Let me know or Kim know about it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we, we got sidetracked, Ms. Slane. Anything else?
I just want the website working. So if it's working, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I think that we need to add to our budget next year of overhauling the website completely from bottom up.
We are in the process of working with that now.
Okay.
Mr. McClung?
I'm good.
All right. Well, we just got through with our, our bikes and barbecue, and now we coming up on October seventh through the tenth, the Corvettes. Corvette, thirtieth annual Corvette Weekend in Eureka Springs. The car show's going to be up at Pine Mountain. Their old place, so they'll be back up there again. They are real excited to come back. They are real excited to come back. Last year, they, they didn't come, and they're real disappointed, so they're excited to be back up here. So if you get a chance, you want to go out and look at some nice Corvettes, it's October 7th through the 10th, and the car show is that Saturday, which I don't know which, what that date is.
Is there a parade?
Probably Saturday.
The parade is at 6:30 PM, and it's going to go, it's always on top of the hill, starting at the Victorian Inn and coming toward the end of the Ozarks. So, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.